Good evening and welcome to this City of Pasco City Council Workshop Meeting, August twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four. The council thanks you for being part of your community and part of your city government. At workshop meetings, council discusses issue, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available for those live on that short table that says agendas immediately as you walk into the right for anyone following along. W W W dot Pasco dash wah dot glove slash agenda. This meeting is also being televised live on P S C T V channel one nine one. On Spectrum Cable in Pasco and in Richland and is streamlined on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel and go via GoToWebinar. This and previous council meetings are available on the city's website. Uh, the public may submit their comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And certainly we will have um items with opportunity for public comment at item five and I'll lay out the ground rules there. So with that, Ms. Clerk.
Councilmember Barajas?
Present.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
Present.
Councilmember Grimm?
Here.
Councilmember Harpster?
Present.
Councilmember Peralas?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Milne?
Present.
And Mayor Serrano.
I am here. Thank you. With that, if you'll all please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, next item is item number four. If you've followed along, verbal reports from council members. Um, my little screen doesn't seem to be working, so I'll just head turn to the right and we'll start with uh, we'll just come down. Councilmember Grimm?
Oh, um, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Last week I met with the Benton Franklin Translate Board of Directors for a special meeting where we hired a new C E O and kind of rebranded the position as a C N O to align with just kind of current standards and everything like that. Um, staff has been kind of at the helm of the ship for the last couple of months and we look forward to our new C E O getting um, going this week and he's got a lot of work ahead of him and look forward to supporting him in that role and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm, Ms. Bras.
Thank you. Um, I did attend the Tri-Cities Hispanic Chamber of Commerce luncheon where uh, Director Kevin Lewis talked about the coming event, big event that is gonna draw a lot of uh, tourism into the Tri-Cities as a whole, that Ironman event, if you've not heard about it. There's a lot of radio spots uh, in regard to the Ironman where um, participants are coming from all, all over the world, really. And I know um, um, Mayor Pro Tem Melney was there as well, so he'll share a little bit more, but participants are coming from all over the world, using up our, our services, staying at our hotels, using our recreation areas, uh, but especially drawing in, drawing in a lot of that revenue that the Tri-Cities needs. Also did attend our C I P, uh, Capital Improvement, uh, Capital Improvement Plan, uh, Forum held at the Cafe Con Arte. And, you know, we always talk about how uh, we're not informing the community enough. Where people don't know of projects or events that are happening. There's three opportunities. We talked about it last week and I, you know, I did attend and it was not well attended by the community. Um, I would encourage, there's one other happening and I forget the date. Wednesday? It'll be shared. Um, but there's one other opportunity for the community to be involved. Come and bring your, your input, your ideas, your suggestions, what we can do better, how we can do things better. We, we do it when we hear from you. How, what we do affects you as a resident, so please come and show up in person to that uh, C I P event happening when?
Wednesday from five thirty to seven thirty at the Holiday Express.
There we go. Thank you. Um, and I did also wanna say thank you so much to Maria, Director Sarah, uh, Keith Kent and all the staff over at the Waste Management, uh, what is it? The Water and Waste Management, uh, Facilities. I took a tour. Um, it was not the best smelling, but it definitely showed the process of the, of how the city processes and cleans the water to make sure it's extremely clean before it goes back into the river. Uh, but that was a very unique, very interesting tour. Uh, David, you missed out. Uh, but I'm sure you'll schedule that here soon. So I would encourage our council members to be part of that. Um, again, Director Sarah, excellent, excellent work. Um, and I'm still thinking about that thing that was, I'm pretty sure it was a turtle. Um, so don't flush anything. You're not supposed to flush. That's what I learned. Um, and that's all I have to share.
Thank you, Ms. Bras, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, attended the uh, Employee Appreciation BBQ along with uh, Councilwoman Blaisdell on Wednesday last week and um, always like events like that. Um, gives me the opportunity to see how everybody's teams are doing and um, chat with Mr. Lincoln after the event. And I, I just really like seeing all the different departments hanging out together and seemingly having a good time and um, you don't always see it with a lot of companies or workplaces, so um, kudos to you all in your uh, in your uh, leadership in your departments. Um, however, next time I don't wanna be stuck passing out vegetables, so that's all.
We'll get you the fruits next time. Mr. Milne?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so last week I did attend the Hispanic Chamber with uh, Councilwoman Bras. And uh, just let you know, we actually were talking about the C I P to everybody, so just let you know, as council members, we a lot of times are telling people in the community, so it was frustrating to go to um, Cafe Con Arte later that evening and I was a little bit late, um, but I did see the staff there. They stayed to the very end and so again, just reiterating what uh, Councilwoman Bras is saying that please get involved, please come out and these, your input really does matter and what the direction the city goes and uh, just yeah, other than that, uh, it was a pretty good week.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bras?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I got with the new owner of, of the Rite Aid Building uh, last week. Um, we just kind of discussed about what he was gonna do with that building. He currently has uh, one tenant in there and he, he plans on um, converting the other side to hopefully to restaurants. Um, so that was kind of cool to kind of get uh, you know, his take on what he wants to do with that building. And then I also met with Mike Mi- um, Mike Miller about some of the art programs he's gonna be doing along with the Pasco School District. Um, they're gonna select a couple, uh, three pieces to put on side of his building and then he's gonna give out some scholarships. So that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Bras. Um, I'll just clean it up with uh, had the opportunity to attend the Ribbon Cutting for the Goat, which is uh, a community, an apartment community um, on Sandifer and Burns, basically. I mean, obviously on Burns. Um, but uh, it's, it's a pretty impressive community. They had a V R room, a virtual reality room. They had a theater. They had a nice gym. Um, obviously a lot of opportunities for different floor plans, new amenities and on the backside, they intend to build a sixty-two, I believe, plus community. Um, I did, I did ask for anyone curious, even if uh, you know, ninety percent of your body is beaten up and it identifies as over sixty-two, your, your age court has to actually show it, so not quite qualifying at forty-four yet, but at least there's a nice place in eighteen years. So that was a great opportunity. Um, with that, we're gonna move on to item number five, which is items for discussion with opportunity for public comment. As I mentioned, there are some ground rules for the public comment here. What we do is we allocate up to two comments per side on the issue. So we have issues A through H or Alpha through uh, handsome or whatever you wanna use. I can't, it's been a long day. Um, two minutes, two, two comments per side. Aggregate eight minutes. Um, after those two, two um, either pro or con, we would shut fundamentally that side off. So with that, we're gonna move on to item uh, five A, which is update on Hanford Communities, scheduled for about ten minutes, Mr. Lincoln and Mr. Replug, I suppose.
Yep, thank you, Mayor and Council. We've got Mr. Replug here again tonight, uh, wearing his other hat as Executive Director for the uh, Hanford Communities and this is a opportunity to provide an annual report and get a little more information on what's happening out at Hanford and uh, he'll also have time for questions as well. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lincoln, and good evening. Uh, as, as you said, I was just in front of you all a couple of weeks ago, wearing a different hat with my role at Tri-Deck, but uh, today I'm here in my role with Execu- as Executive Director of Hanford Communities. I provided you an update just about this time last year as well. Um, but as you recall, as you might recall, Hanford Communities was created in nineteen ninety-four. At the time, the Hanford Site was really going through a period of massive transition. There was a lot of uncertainty and unknowns regarding what the scope of the cleanup was, what the scope of the risk was, um, to the community, to the environment, to the workforce and those sort, that sort of thing. And at the time, all of the local governments were devoting a decent amount of staff time and energy into kind of tracking what was happening with Hanford. I think uh, the Pasco and Richland city managers at the time came together and said, there's probably a more efficient way for us to do this if we work together as the local governments. And so around that time, they created Hanford Communities, really to represent the local governments on Hanford cleanup issues. Um, the other piece of it was to better inform the community about what was happening at the Hanford Site and to put out information and that sort of thing. Um, and so that operated actually as a staff function for the City of Richland for over twenty years. When the previous Executive Director retired, uh, the Hanford Communities Governing Board approached me and approached uh, Tri-Deck and said, there's a lot of kind of overlap between the work that David already does uh, in his role at Tri-Deck and what Hanford Communities does. We both focus a lot on, on Hanford cleanup issues and so would it make sense for David to serve in that role as well? And so the two organizations are distinct and separate, have separate boards, uh, separate decision-making bodies, but um, I just wear both hats. And so uh, I've been doing that now since two thousand and twenty. It's been a, it's been a real honor and pleasure to represent the local governments, cause uh, as I think we all know, the Hanford Site and what happens at Hanford has a lot of impacts on our entire community. Um, whether it's um, not that there's any immediate risk from what's happening in Hanford right now, but ensuring that that remains the case and that the, the site is cleaned up uh, to the standards that needs to be cleaned up to, that the policies are right, that the funding level is right. Um, the reputational impact that it has on our entire community, those are all important for every part of the Tri-Cities. Plus there are people who work at, there's about twelve thousand people that work out at the Hanford Site full-time. They live in all four of our Tri-Cities and, and beyond areas. And there's about three billion dollars in federal funding that's invested in Hanford cleanup in the current fiscal year. It's probably gonna go up in the next fiscal year and so there's an economic impact to the Hanford Site as well. Uh, Hanford Communities has two boards. First is the Governing Board. That's the policymaking and decision-making board. Uh, for Pasco, Councilman Harpster is the representative on the Governing Board and then Councilman Grimm is his alternate. So it's been a great having uh, Councilman Harpster participating uh, since he's been on council. And then the Administrative Board handles the administration, administrative functions of the organization and uh, Adam Lincoln is the city's representative on the Administrative Board. So I won't dwell on this for too long, but for two thousand and twenty-three, um, you know, it was a pretty significant year. I kind of have to use acronyms because otherwise these would be like paragraphs rather than uh, bullet points, but D F Law is the Direct Feed Low Activity Waste Facility. We have fifty-six million gallons of waste at the Hanford Site in underground tanks. Um, that has to be taken out, treated and um, solidified. So one way to do that is to vitrify it or turn it into glass. Um, and so the Low Activity Waste Facility will do that for a fraction of about half of the Low Activity Waste. Um, that's been, that's the waste treatment plant that's been under construction for, you know, a couple of decades now. They pour, poured the first patch of, batch of test glass, uh, moving towards actually treating the tank waste and solidifying it in glass next year. So um, now the second melter is heated up as well. They pre-treated about six hundred ninety-seven, it says there, a thousand gallons of tank waste to prepare it for the Low Activity Waste Facility. They treat a bunch of groundwater. Um, I did wanna call out the three twenty-four building. Uh, that's the three hundred two ninety-six waste site. That's a, a building that's in, if, if you know kind of the, the three hundred area at the Hanford Site is just north of Pacific Northwest National Laboratory. Um, it was a facility that was used for a lot of radiological research and development, testing, that kind of thing. Back in the eighties, there was a spill of a highly radioactive material, strontium ninety, I believe. Um, they thought it was contained within the facility. Turns out it wasn't. It got into the, the soil underneath the building and um, right now, the, the building is still there and the Department of Energy is working with the Environmental Protection Agency to kind of figure out what the path forward is going, going to be for that. The nice thing um, every, nice might be a relative term, but the nice thing is that it's underneath a gigantic building where it's, it's not moving. There's no rainwater or anything getting to it where it'll get into the groundwater. But it is a few hundred yards away from the river and less than a mile from the Richland City Limits. So given its location, it is a high priority for Hanford Communities and for the community uh, uh, of Richland especially. So we're tracking that pretty closely. Um, another thing that's really been important for a lot of our, our local governments is PILT, Payment and Lewis of Taxes. Uh, the Hanford Site includes, mo- most of it is in Benton County, but there's other portions in both Franklin and Grant Counties. That's federal land that's not taxable and so the federal government came up with a PILT program to reimburse local governments for the property taxes that they aren't able to collect. Um, that goes directly to the counties and they just disperse it for uh, various purposes. A lot of that goes to school districts, hospitals, some infrastructure and that sort of thing. Recently, it's been funded adequately, but in the past it hasn't and so um, it is an important kind of additional res- resource for local governments to fund certain functions and so that's something that we track pretty closely. Uh, I'm gonna touch on the holistic negotiations a little bit later, so I'll skip that piece for now. Uh, for those of you who were here last year, I did introduce, uh, we added a new team member, Bethany Close, uh, who's really taken over a lot of the social media. Um, and newsletters and, and we put together a number of videos. Yeah, one of the things that we find is if you don't live and breathe Hanford and you hear things like D F Law and Westeth and three twenty-four, three hundred two ninety-six, it doesn't really make sense. And so we're trying to build the Hanford Communities Website into a resource, kind of a one-stop shop. So if you're kind of the casual observer who just sees something on the news or reads something in the newspaper, you can go to that website and get at least a general understanding in kind of layman's terms about what's going on. But also we put together a series of videos that's on our, the Hanford Communities YouTube Page, which is sort of a Hanford one oh one and what's the history of Hanford, what's going on now and what's the future for cleanup? Uh, and those, that can be a resource for you, all of you or for your constituents if you ever have uh, anybody who asks questions that, you know, kind of wants to be pointed in, in the right direction. And of course, they're always welcome to, to call me directly as well. Manhattan Project National Park was established by Congress in the year two thousand and sixteen and that includes the Hanford Site, the B Reactor, as well as uh, the Oak Ridge and Los Alamos Sites in Tennessee and New Mexico respectively. Uh, ours is sort of advanced from the other two because it is open to the public for tours. Uh, last year, there were over thirteen thousand visitors from fifty-three countries, helps bring tourism, but also tells our story. You know, I think that there's a lot of community pride in the contributions that the Tri-Cities played into helping the United States win World War Two and the Cold War. Um, and that really began with the B Reactor, the world's first full-scale operational nuclear reactor. So uh, that, we have a Tri-Cities National Park Committee, which is um, a council member from each city participates in that. It's chaired by Mayor Gary from West Richland and also includes representatives from other local counties and other organizations. So um, that continues to be a priority for Hanford Communities. In two thousand and twenty-four, this year, um, they're working on pre-treating a million gallons of waste. The second melter is heated up at the Direct Feed Low Activity Waste Facility. Um, the two thousand gallon test bed initiative demonstration, that's really important. Um, I mentioned that the Direct Feed Low Activity Waste Facility will vitrify about half of Hanford's Low Activity Tank Waste, which is roughly ninety percent of the waste of the fifty-six million gallons. Um, but the other half, there hasn't really been a defined plan for. Um, the test bed initiative is to test whether or not instead of vitrifying it, turning it into glass, can you instead mix it with concrete, grouted? Uh, and then ta- shift that grouted waste permanently out of the state to sites either in Utah or Texas. It has the potential to get that waste out of tanks sooner, um, and to reduce, reduce the risk sooner and potentially save significant amount of money at the same time. And so we've been very supportive of that. Uh, it's been a kind of a long road to get to where we're at, but that's gonna be moving forward. And we at Hanford Communities think that's a very good thing. Uh, you all may have heard, just since we sent this um, presentation over to the city staff, there was an announcement that a new, an additional Hanford Tank is leaking, Hanford Tank T one oh one. They announced it's leaking approximately two hundred gallons a year into the soil around the tank. Uh, again, this is in the, it was called the Central Plateau of the Hanford Site. Long ways away from the river, a long way away from the edges of the Hanford Site, so there's no risk. It's already going into soil and ground that's already pretty contaminated from the forty-plus years of plutonium production at Hanford, so in that respect, it's not a, a risk, but it is a reminder that a lot of those tanks are sixty, seventy, eighty years old. There's three that are known to be leaking right now and more will leak. The solution, the permanent solution is to get the waste out of the tanks, either vitrify it or grout it, and so it's no longer a risk ever again. Um, and so that's why the Test Bed Initiative is really so important. Uh, one other thing I, I'd point to on this slide, one of the other things that I think is very top of mind for Hanford Communities is what's the long-term are we on the right trajectory to, to successfully complete Hanford Cleanup? It's not gonna happen anytime soon, but are we on the right trajectory? Are we going in the right direction? And the concern has been that according to D O E, the Department of Energy's most recent report in two thousand and twenty-two, they estimated that if cleanup was completed in two thousand and seventy-eight, which is their estimated time period, it would cost anywhere between three hundred billion to six hundred forty billion dollars total. So if you do the math at the high level, that's six hundred forty billion, that's about ten, eleven billion dollars a year, every year between now and two thousand and seventy-eight. And we have an awesome congressional delegation that fights really hard to get the funding that we get at the Hanford Site. We get more than any other site in that entire uh, country, but that's three billion dollars here. That's a long ways away from eleven billion dollars a year. And the reality is that Congress can't afford or is not going to direct eleven billion dollars to the Hanford Site to uh, and so we need to identify alternative approaches that still safely and uh, effectively clean it up, but at a cost that's realistically achievable. Things like the Test Bed Initiative are uh, key opportunities to, to take advantage of, of reducing costs while still effectively cleaning up the site. But there are more opportunities out there that we continue to urge the Department of Energy and its regulators to move forward on because we do, as a community, we really feel like it's important that the site be on a, a path towards completion of cleanup. Uh, I already kind of spoke to the Test Bed Initiative. Um, the Hanford Site is under what's called the Department of Energy's Office of Environmental Management. Um, it covers fifteen different sites around the country. You probably have also heard maybe of, again, I mentioned Oak Ridge or Savannah River. Um, and several other sites, Paducah, Portsmouth. Um, it's about a eight billion dollar a year office. Again, Hanford gets about three billion of that. Um, but I wanted to mention that Candace Robertson was named earlier this year as the lead uh, Senior Advisor, the top person for the Office of Environmental Management. What's unique about Candace is she actually started off being involved on Department of Energy things as a county commissioner in Nye County, Nevada, where uh, Yucca Mountain is and where they were planning on putting the nation's high-level defense waste as well as uh, used commercial nuclear fuel. And so she has, I think, a unique perspective, being that she's now a senior Department of Energy official overseeing cleanup across the country, but also she's a former locally elected official too. And so she, I think she sees things through a somewhat different lens and we're really optimistic that we can work really effectively with her moving forward, just to kind of continue to grow and strengthen the partnership that it needs to exist between the department and its host communities. Uh, I told you I was gonna come back to the holistic uh, settlement agreement. This is a pretty big deal. The, the U S Department of Energy and its regulators, the State Department of Ecology and the Environmental Protection Agency have been in sort of secret uh, negotiations for the last four plus years on what will be the long-term path forward to deal with Hanford's tank waste. Um, they were federally mediated, so they had to be kind of held in secret for that time period. But they just uh, in the springtime released kind of the details about that, um, which would include some of the things listed below. I, I won't uh, go in, for, for the sake of time, I won't go into all the details, but I think that one of the key takeaways is that for years, there was not alignment when it came to their approach to Hanford Cleanup. Uh, Hanford Communities, Tri-Deck, locally elected officials would go over to Olympia and Lacey to talk with state government officials from the Governor's Office, the Attorney General's Office and the um, Department of Ecology a couple of times a year and it was like we were just talking past each other. We just, nobody was aligned. The Department of Energy wasn't aligned with the state. And it, it was, it's just not the way that you can effectively get cleanup done. At other sites like Savannah River Site in South Carolina, they're actually making really good progress and they're the department, its stakeholders and its regulators are all kind of pulling in the same direction. And that's really required, especially at a super complex cleanup site like the Hanford, like, like Hanford. Um, and so probably the biggest takeaway from the settlement agreement is that they're go- moving towards alignment. They're, uh, they're beginning to pull in the same direction, which we think is gonna be critically important for the long-term success of the cleanup mission. Um, Hanford Communities is getting ready to finalize our comments on the settlement agreement and we'll be sending that in later this week. And last but not least, I think you all uh, may also have received the issue agenda that Hanford Communities puts together, together every year. Uh, it's a couple-page document. We've shortened it so it's more easily readable, but it identifies really the, the priorities for the organization as it relates to Hanford and Hanford Cleanup. Uh, those are our priorities. Um, and we really try to focus on what's go- what's most important to the community, but also what's going to lead to again, the successful completion of the Hanford Cleanup Mission, although it realistically won't be done until two thousand and seventy-eight or beyond. Um, but we need to get and stay on the right path forward um, in the coming decades. And so with that, I wanted to um, maybe provide a, wrap up in time. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Replug. Um, it's always good to hear about what's happening. Um, I'll start with Mr. Harpster then move that way.
Just one quick question. Appreciate the explanation on the third tank that's now leaking. Um, how many tanks in total are there out there?
One hundred and seventy-seven.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. With that, Mr. Grimm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, David, for your presentation. Just um, curious, you know, and I, I guess it's probably important for the public to know. It's not like you're in charge of Hanford, you know, you are just, you know, providing information, providing insight, giving us access and all that, so you know, uh, Hanford has kind of had a blight this year. I mean, back in January, you know, the idle workers and um, the, the lawsuit because of that and of course, as you brought up and Council, remember Harpster just asked about the leaking tank and everything, but um, you know, do, do they have anything that they're doing to try to, I guess, restore reputation or build confidence within the public? Cause I think, you know, that the reputation has kind of been tarnished this year.
Yeah, and one of the things, uh, I'm glad you made it clear because, you know, sometimes when I, I, I give updates to each of the seven participating governments and I've had a couple of folks think I actually am here on behalf of the Department of Energy and I'm really here on behalf of Hanford Communities, which represents the local governments that represent the community. Um, and now we have actually, after uh, Councilman Harpster suggested it, been working with Mr. Lincoln and I think Brian Vance, the, the guy who's actually in charge of the Hanford Site for the Department of Energy, will be here to give a report to you, to the council here in a few weeks. Um, so that might be a good question for him too, but ultimately, I mean, you, you're right, there have been a few uh, kind of bad news stories this year. Generally speaking though, when, I mean, I was born and raised here, um, going up through the years and all the different headlines, I think things are actually far better today than they have been in the past. Things seem to be on a path towards really getting things done, specifically, you know, they've been working for twenty-plus years to begin vitrifying some of that tank waste. That's actually by all senses, it seems like it's gonna actually happen next calendar year. Um, that's a pretty big deal. Um, the alignment that I spoke to amongst all the stakeholder, the, the Department of Energy and its regulators, uh, that's, it's never been that way in the thirty- Uh, that's, it's never been that way in the thirty plus years of Hanford cleanup. There are some stains on the kind of reputation that um. I think they're trying to work to, and I'm not here to try to defend them at all, um, but that they're trying to work to rectify, but. In the grand scheme, I think things are more, seem to be moving more in the right direction now than anytime that I can recall in the past.
Okay, well, I appreciate your work on that, I know there's a lot of community members concerned, so thank you for your answer and yes, I will re pose that question here in a few weeks, so. Yeah, no, thank you, really appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no further lights, Mr. Replug, thank you, and that opens us to. Our public comment, I always appreciate, you know, you get a lot of information, you're able to distill it succinctly, so thank you.
Do the Micro Machine, you're a fast talking guy, but I wanted to.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
You gotta get the mustache, be full Micro Machine. Um, with that, do you have any public comment? Going once, going twice, third time, nope. With that, we'll move on to item B, which is ordinance, amending sections of the Pasco Municipal Code. Titles thirteen and three related to Pasco Water Reuse Facility, scheduled for about eight minutes, and it looks like uh, Mr. Sarah, you're gonna kick us off.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, we are proposing amendments to Title thirteen. Title thirteen governs water and sewer. And the utilities that are included within that chapter are water, portable water, that is, irrigation. Wastewater or municipal sewer, stormwater and process water reuse. And this presentation really focuses on the process water reuse. Um, each of these utilities assign a cost for the system. Uh, it's cost and expenses, right, to each uh user, so they're all accounted for separately, next slide please. So with that, a quick recap on process water reuse facility or PWRF, as you have heard me talked about before. Um, this facility was reaching capacity, didn't have the ability to allow for current users to expand, not to receive new users. Since two thousand seventeen, the city has been working with existing processors to find alternatives for expansion. Um, though that coordination looked like meetings that eventually turned in close to like twenty twenty, twenty twenty one into. Quarterly meetings and then monthly meetings to keep abreast of advancement and to coordinate on the characteristics of uh. Needed for the treatment that was to occur at that facility once it was expanded. Uh, in the midst of that, a new processor um announced their desire to join the facility and that is very gold. And uh through various iterations, we had an approved facility plan in twenty twenty three. That allowed for the expansion of the facility with biological treatment, next slide please. With that, uh, you heard me talk several times about uh improvements happening at PWRF. Some of you had the opportunity to tour the facility and see some of those occurring. Uh, phase one, which is completed, was the additional portable water and electrical improvements. Phase two is the additional winter storage ponds and those are underway, they're um. One of them is close to being completed and the other two are well underway. Phase three is the work related to the actual biological treatment, removing BOD. Also removing nitrogen and then taking some of the byproducts of uh those processes and generating renewable natural gas. And I have a mistake on the cost of that project that is actually a hundred and thirty million, not a hundred and eighty. And finally, phase four, which is upgrades to uh the land disposal system within the farm. Um, uh, fields where where some of that nitrogen, the remaining nitrogen is uptaken. So in this case, just like in any other utility, the users of the facility are the ratepayers. And therefore they're responsible for covering all capital and O and M costs needed to run that utility, next slide please. And these are just some renderings of the improvements and it's just to show you that in the next slide, uh, there is a picture of actual construction, next slide please. Um, and that is about a couple of months old now, so there is a lot more uh progress. Um, having been achieved in this site and you're seeing the existing facility, the phase three facility, which is the renewable gas. Generation with all the biological treatment uh associated with it, and then phase two, which is where the ponds will be located, next slide please. So with that, um, the city acted uh based on RCW um allowing to. Uh, work with a developer that would allow um for the. Sorry, construction, treatment, operation of um the. Industrial facility specifically to the biological treatment and the generation of gas and an agreement with that. Uh, developer was signed and that is Burnham SEV, um, council approved that agreement in twenty twenty three. And then uh based on that agreement and understanding the commitments with each processors of the ratepayers. Uh, we also generated uh WTAs or water treatment agreements, which are the agreements that will. Uh, govern the rates and the obligations of each of those um users of the this utility. Um, for the next thirty years, so those agreements have been drafted and provided to uh the processors, several versions have been. Worked through throughout the years and now we're in a final draft, just awaiting some comments. Um, so I will call back to this slide, so just remember this, we're gonna kind of take a little. Detour to talk about how rates are set, um, but just bear in mind that those. Users of this utility that choose not to enter a long term agreement with the city will be governed by the municipal code. And so now we'll we'll take this little detour to talk about how rates are being set in all utilities and then specifically in PWRF. Next slide please. So revenue setting, and I know that Director Buckley will correct me if I am wrong. Uh, revenue setting for a utility takes into consideration all the facets of operating and maintaining. That utility in service, so with that. Um, we look at operations and maintenance cost, we look at debt service. Uh, which is needed to either run the facility or enter debt in order to build capitals or capital expenses and the cost of. Funding those if we were bonding, for example, or if there was interest. Um, there's also reserves um to allow for that coverage of the debt and and also for um replacement of equipment. And then uh a cost of service model is used to allocate those costs to the different users. Um, and sometimes there are classes that need to be identified, in this this case, that's not applicable. Uh, with that, uh, we move on to the next slide. And the processors WTA, so those water treatment agreements. Address those, that rate setting and refer back to a rate model that was created as a cost of service model, actually. And it's a lot more complex because this facility is a lot more complex in nature than a regular municipal sewer system. Uh, in this case, we look at the facility that is currently operated by the city, which will include those ponds and pump stations. And then there is the facility that is the eh treatment itself, so the biological treatment and gas generating facility. As well as all the capital investment that allows us to have this facility operational and available for um. All the processors that desire to join or that have already joined, so there's seven uh food processors. So with that, uh, you're seeing kind of like the the summary of what that rate model looks like. And uh I call attention to the portion in uh yellow. Towards the bottom of the screen where we are also seeing credits that are to be allocated to processors. Based on their contributions of BOD, which in turn allow for generation of um revenues through. Uh, the selling in the market of renewable natural gas. So um again, WTAs, those processors that join the facility. Uh, through a long term commitment can see this rates, a repayment period of thirty years and credits being assigned to them based on the. Characteristics of the flow that they send. This facility again has a lot of variability in the seasons and the type of foods that are being processed, so each of their discharge is a little bit different. And we try to reflect that in a rate model that really takes into consideration every component of that discharge. Next slide please. And for this portion of the slide, I will call our legal counsel, uh, Steve DiGiulio. Who um is representing Foster Garvey and he will walk us through their revisions to the code.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good to be with you again. Um, certainly, uh, I've been before you talking about the contract with Burnham. Uh, you asked me to work on that with the city staff to help put that together. But you're also familiar with me for my work with the city on various local improvement district projects. Um, throughout the city, uh, the city of Pasco has regularly employed utility. Improvement districts, local improvement districts to finance the capital for expansion of facilities, the city thought about. Assessment based in this situation for the expansion of the PWRF. But frankly, it's to the disadvantage of the processors to use assessment based. Charging because assessments are uh property based and not uh able to be expensed. As a part of the business operations, so uh the city be uh stuck with the system of rates and charges. And as Director Sarah indicated, that process. Uh, was developed after extensive rate modeling and work with the uh various processors. What you have in your packet is a draft revision to the Pasco Municipal Code. That lays out the foundation for this approach and lays out the. Uh, cost of service model adopts it as the foundation for the rates going forward. As Director Sarah indicated, the rate model would be applicable to those who do not. Uh, choose, processors who choose not to enter into a long term agreement. Um, and their city can't force them to contract, they would be subject to rates and charges. Uh, governed by the code. And similarly, if not committing to the long term program by entering into a contract. The city's recommendations, they not be entitled to credits either that come back to the city as a result of the process. The long term contract, the burdens and the benefits. Questions always asked, um, and this is one of the questions that came up from processors in the past and has come up again. Well, what happens if the city screws up, who's gonna pay for it in that situation? Well, as a reminder, the city of Pasco is not an investor owned utility. Its systems are not investor owned like um. Puget Sound Energy or uh the Avista or other of those uh investor owned utilities. Who have shareholders and generate profit. City of Pasco does not generate profit on its operations, so whatever cost uh is involved with the. Capital or operation of a utility is charged to the utility. Whether that's uh a cost that associates with positive or negative aspects of the operation of that facility. Um, what would happen if we reduced the rates or didn't charge the processors appropriately? Well, the city would have to find that money somewhere else and that money would have to probably come. From other ratepayers, the residential ratepayers and the city of Pasco and most other communities don't operate that way, they allocate the funds. To the users of the component systems. And that's what we've tried to do in this um rate structure in order to. Spread the cost of service over thirty years for the contract participants, but in a shorter term to recognize the risk. To the city for those processors who choose not to enter into long term contracts. Because in the short term, the risk is shifted from the processors to the other city ratepayers. Another observation that uh I thought would be appropriate to mention. Uh, and again, Director Sarah called out the fact that we've got eighteen separate chapters in Title thirteen. Uh, related to the city's water and sewer utility. That code, those code provisions date back over seventy years to nineteen fifty four. Interestingly enough, the uh uh provisions relating to chapter thirteen fifty five regarding the water treatment or the process. Um, water reuse facility uh dates back to nineteen seventy. The amendments have not been regular or recurrent, so this is somewhat of a major amendment to the code to address. The substantial expansion to the PWRF. But the city of Pasco for decades has maintained the same approach in its provision at chapter, excuse me, section thirteen point ten point oh one oh. This is each system shall maintain separate books and records of system costs, revenues, assets, et cetera. And that's consistent with the Local Government Accounting Act at RCW forty three oh nine two ten. That provides in part that separate accounts shall be kept for each department, public improvement. Undertaking institution and public service industry under the jurisdiction of every taxing body. And no department, what uh public improvement, undertaking institution or public service industry shall benefit. In any financial manner, whatever, by an appropriate appropriation or fund made for the support of another. Saying simply what the statute says, you spend the money on the systems that are benefited by the systems. Because the state is very careful about not allowing you to take utility money, utility funds and applying it to general fund services. And similarly, the general fund is typically not used to support utility services. So that's the background and the foundation for this ordinance. Um, there were additional questions that I know have come in as late as today on some of these issues, the city has been mindful of of the. Concerns, um, one question was asked, what about the five million dollar that was appropriated, excuse me, that was part. Of the federal government's uh recent budget, that's in there. Another question is asking, what about latecomers, if a new processor who we are not currently familiar with should come into town? How will that be accounted for in these systems? Sometimes we refer to that as a latecomer. The model is already built so that if a new processor comes in. And absorbs some of that capacity currently provided by the PWRF. All of the other processor rates will be reduced on a pro rata basis based upon the particular. Demands of that new user, so number of these issues are already addressed in uh the current model. And I know that the city uh uh in terms of Director Sarah or. Uh, the finance department will be prepared to discuss further with the uh processors, any of those further issues going forward. Again, the current issue before you is the rate ordinance, we hope we can bring back uh final forms of the um. Treatment agreements, the WTAs with as many processors uh in the future, thank you, any questions?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Sarah, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I have two more slides, if I can, while his.
We'll pull you back up, Mr. DiGiula, thank you. Ms. Sarah.
So in this next slide, what you're seeing is really a summary of what those um minimum unit rates are for the different characteristics of flows. For each processor and so taking, taking that rate model and evaluating a shorter repayment period to. Address the risk associated with those users that choose not to enter a long term agreement. Uh, these are the unit cost, the ratio between the unit cost you're seeing here and the one established in WTA. Is approximately two point five, so these rates are higher because the repayment is happening faster. And next slide please. And uh finally are the next steps, so as we are um planning for it. The tentative schedule is as follows, we would have the ordinance presented today and um planned for an adoption in the next meeting. That will be September third. That will be September third on a Tuesday. The deadline for processors to provide comments to their final WTA. So WTA were created all the same and then tailored to each processor to account for the specific characteristics of their flow. So those have been distributed. And we are awaiting for comments to ensure that we can have a single template where, again, the tailoring only related to the flows and characteristics of their flow. And then again, with those final comments from WTAs, be able to issue WTAs for signatures in mid October, allowing for that signature to occur before the end of the year. Those processors that again choose not to sign or don't get to sign before the end of the year then will be governed by the ordinance or the municipal code instead of their WTA. And again, that means that the repayment period for capital is accelerated. And with that, we are ready for questions.
Thank you. I'll start with my left, Mr. Paral.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just a few questions. Do we have any processors who are currently not committed to these water treatment, to the water treatment, water treatment agreement?
Yes, currently, no processor has received a final version to sign. And some of them seem pretty open about wanting to sign and others have some reservations.
Do we have an idea what the debt service per month is going to be for now the project going forward?
We have that in the model. I cannot answer that question from the top of my mind. Kind of, it depends. So there's a total cost for that. And then there is an allocation that is dependent on the flow that each processor is sending. So it's not across the board, so to speak. Or it is across the board, but it's not evenly across the board. It's depending on how much flow and where are the constituents. And each capital improvement is divided on. What does that improvement does? Those that have, for example, winter storage that process during the winter will be paying for winter storage improvements, which is the phase two, where those processors that do not need any winter storage are only paying for flexibility within that portion. But they're paying, for example, for the treatment based on the amount of BOD that is to be removed. So we have that and we can provide the model to you if you're interested.
Okay, I'm just interested in the numbers. And why would we have to adjust the rates? And also, I guess in conjunction with that, it says the city manager has given the authority to adjust the rates. Would that be with our approval? Or is he allowed to do that on his own?
The council, by adopting this ordinance, would be adopting a rate model. So every year, costs and expenses will vary. Something as simplistic as the cost for telephone service at the plant will vary. All of those cost elements are built into the rate model. And so by adopting the rate model, the council is saying, here's how we're going to charge going forward. The manager will make those adjustments based upon the rate model. Certainly, if the council wants it to come back every year, it could do so. The idea would be when the rate model needs to be modified, it would come back to the council.
Can you contrast that with other utilities? I mean, typically, doesn't the city council approve those rate increases?
It varies from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Most typically, rates are set by ordinance by the city council, as you will be doing here. The difference is rather, because you have already adopted the model going forward, it's not coming back to you every year to do that because you've already set how it's going to be done year after year. But you often will do that on a, for your stormwater utility or for your water utility. You will be coming back to the council to revisit that from either annually or as needs arise.
Appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harbster. Yeah, Mr. DeGiulio, you talked about a new user coming in. Would the other users' rates decrease proportionally, regardless of whether that new user signs a thirty year WTA or subjects themselves to these proposed changes?
I can't answer that question with precision, but there will be an adjustment down in the existing users' rates because a new contributor will be absorbing part of the cost of the plant, both capital and O and M. How much that will be, I can't tell you that.
Okay. And then one other question. If a processor left and a new processor came in, you know, on paper, they'd kind of replace them, understanding that, you know, usage rates would be different most likely. But would these revisions to the code apply or would they have the opportunity to sign a thirty year WTA first?
So first, if somebody leave, does not sign a WTA and leaves and a new user takes over that facility or absorbs that capacity, then the city would pretty be, hopefully, an even exchange. You're not going to lose or benefit by that. Then the question is, what about opportunity for a new WTA? And the answer is yes. The city can enter into a WTA. It would have to be adjusted for the, as Director Sarah indicated, for the particular demands of that user because all of the users have different flow volumes, strength volumes, coming from their plants.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Harbster. Mr. Grimm.
Thank you. And maybe this question's more for Director Sarah. Just following the tentative schedule there, the adoption of the ordinance on the third. And then it says the deadline for processors to provide comments. That's not about the, the rates and everything. That's just about the agreement itself, correct?
That is correct. That is in the language of the agreement. And just for clarity, processors, as they participate in monthly meetings, they had had the opportunity to see the rate model. And we actually had our consultant, FCS, who developed that model, walk all of us through the complexities of it. And we addressed questions and so on. So this is, the model itself and the rates should not be a surprise to processors.
Okay, thank you. And I think it's really just important for the public to know this is just a safeguard to protect the taxpayers, really. And, you know, I think this is just a great collaborative agreement of really the taxpayers and the business community coming together with, you know, what is really a great economic, you know, development driver. For those that haven't followed this, you know, you may think of Pasco for many reasons, but this is actually one of the coolest things. And I know it's probably music to your ears to hear a councilman, you know, gush about a public works project. But no, just our ability to, you know, process all of this water from these food processors, store it over the winter, you know, to where it can be applied for the fields. I mean, these things can get skimmed off for nitrates to then get put on the field. The excess methane gas can get sold back to Cascade Natural Gas. I mean, this is a state of the art facility that really has put Pasco on the map for food processing. And I really appreciate you and your predecessor and all staff who have, you know, brought it to this point. So I just love every bit about this. Thank you.
Seeing no additional lights, I've got a couple of thoughts. So just to confirm my reading of the new amended section, starting with Section two point one, fundamentally, this mandates usage through the facility. But the opportunity is for the path forward, if you will. It's either the thirty year or the ten year approach, right? Okay. And then, you know, Mr. Grimm just mentioned Cascade Natural Gas. And with some legislation in Washington, obviously, that type of gas is not going to be our future. Now, I understand this is going to produce a different type of gas. Will this still be accredited or a viable energy source that falls within the Climate Commitment Act?
Yes, that is our understanding.
Okay. Because obviously, you know, once that benefit goes away, that's, while it might be kind of incidental to the grand picture, we certainly don't want to lose that opportunity. Well, I've got some additional thoughts, but I see some familiar faces in the crowd and I suspect there may be some comments on this from the user side. So that's obviously no, no requirement there. But I am interested in hearing anyone that's been holding out as a negative word, but maybe hesitant to sign the WTA, whether or not it's spoken tonight or otherwise. I'd be interested to know what type of negotiations or where we are on that. Again, I don't necessarily need that tonight, but certainly, again, I see some of the user side in the crowd. So with that, we'll open it to public comment. Again, same rules apply. Got the two two, two two. And so if we've got folks that want to speak, let's just kind of see where we are after the first couple of comments. So if that public comment is open. Going once.
Hello, Mayor, Council and staff. Appreciate the opportunity. Brandon Mossitt with Oregon Potato Company, sixty six ten West Court Street, Pasco, Washington. Here to speak first off, appreciate support from city staff and our industry in working through, you know, solutions to support business. So much appreciated. That being said, we, and I represent, well, Oregon Potato Company, Pasco Processing and then Freeze Pack, connected to the Pasco reuse facility. I'm here just to express general concern on the WTA, the terms, the conditions, the length of the term, the significant capital associated with it. And then, you know, some of the details in the term language will be hard for our company to, I guess, support. I guess more specifically, it's very large capital burden. And then with the idea of two rate structures between the WTA and the ordinance is speaking personally is a little bit odd when I think of an agreement with breach of contract arrangements rather than a city ordinance that's driven through like a discharge permit or a pre-treatment ordinance. So that's a little odd to me. And then more specifically, the WTA being considered in advance of the facility going through startup and commissioning and verifying that it's meeting the performance criteria that was, you know, agreed upon between the contract with the city and the city's contractor in advance of being issued the Washington State Department of Ecology discharge permit. And then, you know, like I said, some details within the WTA that are ambiguous with certainty around financial constraints, maybe some risk, and then visibility of how that impacts operations. And so just general concerns there. Again, appreciate the city of Pasco staff giving us an extension on our comments. And then the second part of my comments is to kind of transition to the ordinance and just asking the, you know, our company be aware of the process for the city to consider the ordinance, understand the rate structures and the opportunities for our business to evaluate the WTA arrangements versus the city ordinance rate structure. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And obviously, it looks like the intent here would be the adoption of the ordinance as early as next week. So, I mean, that's, that's the proposed timeline. So I'll just note that in response to your final parting comment. Do we have any additional public comments? Going twice? Going three times? No comment? With that, we will move forward with item C, which is simple amendments to the sections of the Pasco municipal code, Title twenty five zoning code related to corner lot fences. Mr. Gonzalez teed up for about five minutes.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Back in late twenty twenty three, about fall of twenty twenty three, council adopted ordinance number forty six eighty, which amended the municipal code to increase flexibility with respects to residential fences and particularly related to the height of those fences. That ordinance allowed for fences taller than six feet in height, provided that they were located fifteen feet from the property line of a residential dwelling, along with ensuring compliance with the site distance triangle clear view standards. That's that triangle view of sight located with the requirement with at intersection of streets or accessways. The PMC update only has, or the existing code only has one definition for front yard. And so staff has taken a look at the new ordinance and taken into account some additional feedback from both the public and council. And in the following slides, provide a proposed recommendation to move forward. This slide in particular shows the existing standard. It might be difficult to see here in the illustration, but essentially that dash line is where fence would be allowed, is allowed under the existing code. That's that fifteen foot setback line. So at that location, you could put a six foot fence. If you wanted to be at the property line, which is that solid line, you would be limited to three and a half feet. You could go another foot and a half, provided that that extra foot and a half had some semi-transparent treatments associated with it. So on the next slide, staff has identified some proposed changes to provide some additional flexibility. We think that this additional flexibility would meet likely all of the, of the interest from residential property owners, et cetera, across the city with respects to privacy with the use of a fence. So essentially, the proposed changes to the fence code would remove the fence height setback requirements within the secondary front yard. And then also add a definition for a secondary, secondary front yard. One of the omissions during the amendment last year was there's still reference to language regarding flanking side yard. That's not typically the language most folks use in a, in a conversation. Certainly not language that either planning staff use commonly either. And so simply renaming it and coming up with a definition that's much more, I think, more of a best practice and common would be along the lines of simplifying the new regulation. One of the things as well would be adding the requirements for the site distance triangle clear view. That's that transportation access requirement. Is adding that directly into the municipal code rather than directing members of the public to the construction and design engineering standards, which is a much lengthier and more complex document for folks. An example of that triangle is on the following slide. My won't attempt to get into the calculations or the formulas used to come up with those triangles, but certainly trust our transportation engineers and experts on how that is calculated. So adding this language directly into the PMC would be one of the staff recommendations as well. On the next slide, some considerations that staff has raised is that the proposed changes could cause situations where some lots have a six foot fall fence in their front yard. And that would be something that would be allowed under the proposed changes. However, depending on the phasing of a residential project or who comes in first, it could impact the driveway placement. That driveway placement would still have to ensure compliance with that clear view triangle. So if you have a lot and you put a six foot fence and the lot next to yours is undeveloped, when that lot does come through for, for review, it would have to comply with that, that triangle of sorts for, for access to make sure access and safety is, is, is in place. There's two slides following where you can kind of see an example of what the current code allows. You can see that six foot fence along the street. I think it's Cathedral Drive here. And you can see that there was a, in this case, the driveway was offset to ensure for that safety of the, the clear view triangle. On the next slide is a second view looking the opposite direction. You can see if you're driving through that street. This one's kind of difficult because you do have some topography changes as well. But either as a pedestrian or as a driver, drive in through the other direction here. You could see where that distance of the driveway, if you're pulling out, could be problematic if, in some cases. So essentially, staff's revised proposal to part of this. Revised um proposal to part of this particular code would be to allow for. One of the recommendations could be to allow for six foot fences along the property line. Um again, this would probably satisfy the majority of of remaining questions we still receive on fences in particular. Um the addition of the clear view triangle language directly into the municipal code, it would also be something that would likely be added to the application so that. Um residents and applicants have that information upfront versus finding out towards the latter end of a um of a permitting project. Um and uh uh that would likely uh meet. Essentially what we hear most remaining comments on um this particular item. So with that, um next slide is just for uh. Comments, directions, seeking direction from city council on this item and where um and where you would like to go next. So with that, happy to answer any questions I can for you this evening.
Thank you, Mister Gonzalez. Um. I Mister Harpster. Just one question. I'm always up for uh revising the code to make things easier for residents and whatnot, but. In in this uh situation, let's hypothetically say the code was amended and. Somebody is going down that exact street in the picture, a vehicle is traveling down that street, and then somebody at that house where it's behind the fence there. Is backing another driveway and there's a collision. I'm worried about risk to the city if. In that hypothetical scenario, they say, well, you know, why did this? Why was this allowed to happen? Council revised the code. You know, what what would be the risk to the city in that type of situation, if any?
The uh the question that starts off with can you be sued if it's always yes, you don't have to go any further, but. The the reality is is that measure the the liability is supposed to be measured ba- based upon the facts. That are involved or in play in any particular um situation. And here, uh if somebody's. Moving very rapidly, even in a safe situation, you could have an accident. Somebody's moving slowly. Hopefully, people are all responsible. And it'd be hard to say if somebody was doing something backing out of the driveway. Safely under their circumstances, somebody else moving along and not paying attention, you'd have that same accident. So it wouldn't answer. The question of liability. If um that that isn't a good answer, but that's that's the reality that we deal with.
Fair enough.
Uh looks like Mister Peralis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna go ahead and ask, I I the I think the issue um that really uh brought us to. Um us again was this Atkins Atkins fence um situation. So in that case, in that particular case. Would this ordinance allow them to have the fence the way that they wanted? With their application? Cause I'm sure their their lot is similar to other people's lots. So just from my knowledge. Would this ordinance allow them to have their fence at six foot all the way around?
Uh with respects, eh as long as they would be able, as any corner lot would be able to comply with the uh clear view triangle. Um I'm not sure what uh how that would impact their um uh their proposed fence location. Um it would allow for a six foot fence along the majority of of their property line, though. The the one of the key differences um on corner lots, particularly that corner lot in particular, is that it does have a an access easement to the north. Of it, which is um not similar to most corner lots a- across the city. Usually they're bound four four lots in a row, kind of a typical block. Um in that particular locate uh location, there is an access season with a home without public frontage that's further setback. So. Um uh but again, uh compliance with the site distance clear view area is intended to ensure that there's um the minimum safety standards are are applied.
Okay, I guess I'm kind of confused now. It the staff report makes it seem like you're getting rid of the site triangle at that corner area. I mean, that's the kind of the way I read it. So am I misinterpreting?
You know, the the staff report in the presentation is intended to emphasize that um uh a a proposed recommendation to allow for a six foot fence at the. Property line um uh along with um adding language of the sec distance clear view area. Directly into the Pasco municipal code, whereas right now does not currently um a reference in the PMC.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mister Peralis. Mister Milley.
Um thank you. I do appreciate staff. I uh I know these issues came up quite a lot in the last couple of years. I do appreciate you guys. Working on this and uh if I ever could get a a final comment that for instance, the property that we're talking about. That it would be fine if you could just follow up with me. Uh I'm sure you will, but uh. Um I'm glad to see this finally come through. Hopefully, it will solve all issues and hopefully we'll be able to move forward as a council. So I do just want to say thank you for working on it. And hopefully there won't be any other hiccups moving forward, but if you could kind of give me. A update uh when it actually does happen and uh with this particular property, I'd be much appreciated.
Thank you, Mister Milley. I got a couple of quick questions and I'll pump back to you, Mister Harpster. Um assuming we move forward with this. And I suspect really, at this point, are you asking whether or not council. Generally wants to move forward with some of these modifications? Or was this more of a heads up, this is what we're looking at presentation?
Uh a little bit of both. Uh I I think this is a revised recommendation uh following last year's ordinance. Um the uh the next step essentially is is if if council um. That would like staff to move forward, we'll prepare a revised uh ordinance for your review um and move forward with that process.
Yeah, um I mean, just speaking from my my point of view, I certainly would appreciate moving forward with something like this. Um. I I think where it may get tricky and without having the ordinance in front of me is just uh really clarifying the clear view triangle. Uh the picture is helpful, but it's still, you know, kind of muddy. And that's nothing against you. It's just. It's been an interesting concept. We talked about a lot and I I'm really good at lawyer math, which is usually what I can do on my. Fingers and toes. Um beyond that, it's it's a little difficult. So hopefully, if hopefully if we move forward. We would then have just again, we'll probably have to finesse the code a little bit to make sure it's kind of. Uh through the process of us process of the layman. And then I think um as long as the code clearly articulates. The process that seems to be one of the things that our residents struggle with, and I'm not talking about just this. I mean, it's. It's everything from a building permit for a shed, just, you know, hey, here's the application process. And then when we amend it, hopefully, if we amend it. Putting it out there publicly to let folks know this happens, here's the process. So again, my perspective is. I would like to move forward with this. Uh do we have folks in support of that proposition? Miss Ross?
I I had a different question, but yes, I would support this. Um can I go ahead and ask?
Yeah, and then we'll swing back to Harpster.
Uh just real quick, I won't take too long. I did send you an email in regards to um different properties in different parts of the city. Um is this because of, I'm assuming, because the pictures that you showed are a fairly new neighborhoods resident. Residential homes. Is this going to grandfather in older properties?
Uh the proposed ordinance is written for a citywide um application, so um residential um. Uh dwellings or properties across the city would be able to take advantage of of the municipal code update.
Thank you, Miss Peralis, Mister Harpster.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of moving forward. I just wanted to clarify that this item, you know, the proposed language to amend the code would come to us at another workshop meeting before. Okay, thanks.
Okay, um just to clarify, I believe I heard at least four. Is that correct? Okay, so Mister Gonzalez and Mister Lincoln, trust that you worked that. With that, um public comment on this issue. Going once, Mister Grandbo.
Good evening, Council and staff. Uh I just wanted to say thank you very much, uh Councilmember Peralas for bringing that up. Uh I live in an older, more mature neighborhood. My house was built in nineteen twelve, and I think my newest property was nineteen forty three. And I think it's important to consider the aesthetics of the neighborhood when we're taking a look at fencing code, you know, if. If something doesn't quite match what was what all of your neighbors have had for the past sixty, eighty, a hundred years. It might be nice to have something in there that allows for that that language and also going forward on the rest of the fence code as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly for consideration for staff as you uh revise the ordinance. Um any additional public comment going twice? Third time. With that, we'll move on to item E, which is resolution supplement. Supplement number four with PBS Engineering and Environmental Inc. For. Oh yeah, my bad. I totally skipped D. Um these five and eight minutes have really added up. Um item D, ordinance amending sections of the Pasco Municipal Code to Title seventeen. Sign code related to billboards, Mister Gonzalez.
Uh good evening again, uh council. Uh this is a follow-up presentation uh related to a qu- a request to amend the municipal code to allow for billboard staff. Uh previously presented uh this item during the July uh eighth workshop meeting. Uh generally, um as shown on this slide here, there's been uh there have been very minor changes to the Pasco sign code. In two thousand and six, there was an ordinance adopted. To prohibit billboards. And as you can see on this slide, there's uh been several major court decisions related to the content um regulation. Um of signs in particular. Um as far as this request is concerned, um staff and city council. Uh were approached in February by uh for a request to amend the code to allow for billboards um in various locations of the city. On the next slide, as part of staff's research, we wanted to uh uh provide council with um some uh uh real billboard regulations. Um uh for some nearby jurisdictions, Kennewick, Richland, Wallawalla, Yakima, Spokane in particular are. Um are shown on this um slide. Um Kennewick, Richland, Wallawalla uh billboards are prohibited. Um uh in Yakima, uh uh billboards are allowed in certain areas, including industrial and in commercial districts and their central business. District as well. Um and in Spokane, uh billboards are prohibited. Um uh the relocation of existing billboards is allowed. Uh so on the next slide, some uh proposed changes to the municipal code based on um council uh direction. And along with the initiated request. Um and those changes include revising the definition of billboards. Uh and adding a digital bu- billboard uh definition to the PMCs. Uh revising uh the definition to specifically add uh off-premise or off-site. Uh removing billboards from the list of prohibited signs. Um and on the next slide, uh you'll see uh billboards are currently prohibited in the Broadmoor overlay. Part of the northwest, part of the city limits. Um we did receive a um. A a um a submittal from the applicant. That indicated to uh prohibit billboards um within the extents of the third to fifth avenue. Uh from Columbia to Shoshone Street. Um staff has um you use that and also uh generally apply that to be the downtown Pasco overlay district. There's some overlap between the two. The downtown Pasco overlay district does cover a larger area. Um it does uh uh follow the alignment of Volunteer Park just across the street from us up to Court Street. Um and does go further west um along to uh Tenth Avenue. So it does cover a larger area. Staff can certainly revise that. Um but uh for simplification, I wanted to stay with similar boundaries as we already have codified in the municipal code. Um so those are the proposed uh changes to the PMC uh uh further request. Um on the next slide, um you'll just see the sign allowance table. This is sort of the details, the the guts of sorts of of what the proposed amendment table would look like. Um you can see where those changes are made um uh for the request. And on the last slide is a map that. Uh shows the uh areas that would be um affected. Or where the proposed ordinance would uh be applicable uh predominantly in those areas uh in yellow. Covering um several portions of the industrial parts of the city, along with uh other commercial corridors east of uh. Three ninety-five as well and up on um uh Road sixty-eight. So um with that, um staff uh is happy to answer any questions from council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Mister Grim's first.
Um thank you, Mister Mayor. No, I just want to, you know, I appreciate a lot of work's gone into this. I know. Thomas, who just spoke, has, you know, worked through this a lot with some of his neighbors. I see John here is, you know, had conversations with um. You know, several of us and everything like that. And I think that, you know, that this plan is a lot. Um you know, better than maybe what we were originally posed to. You know, you're looking at, we have thirteen, you know, signs. Uh by what I read there, it looks like it's gonna only add another dozen to it. And you know, I'd like to add, I see Mister Hastings here. The executive director of the um Pasco Chamber of Commerce. And this was um posed to the to the board of directors there. And um no one spoke against it. You know, there was a lot of a um hearty approval for. Um to see more billboards in town for economic development. So um yeah, this, I think this has come a long ways from when we first saw it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Grim, Mister Harpster.
Uh yeah, very similar comments, just expressed my support for this. And uh I think as it sits today in our agenda packet. Um I like what it's proposing. I like the um not doing it in the downtown area or the Broadmoor area. But um it still gives um lots of opportunity for other locations. And so um I'd be ready um to prove this next week.
Thank you. Uh, Miss Ross.
Thank you. I just want to mention that I too met with Mister with John. Um and I. I want just some clarification. As we spoke, um we Pasco currently has several billboards. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, a total of twenty-five based on these changes, no more than twenty-five, correct? Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Uh so yeah, I would be in support of this as well.
Thank you. And and Mister Gonzalez, just, you know, I heard you mention the Broadmoor as well as Mister Harpster, but when you look at the map, you see the yellow segment. Which uh contemplates the Broadmoor area, I believe, but then it's also crosshatched. So to confirm. It is absolutely prohibited in that overlaid area?
Yeah, that that's more of a J S error, but a mapping error, but yes, correct. It is currently prohibited by the Broadmoor standards um or the municipal code uh for Broadmoor.
Okay, that's that's what I thought. I just, you know, looking at the picture and hearing the words didn't match up there for a minute. And then just, you know, um i- in the reference of digital billboard, it talks about off-premise. So like when you go to the bank and they've got those little reader boards. That does not constitute a digital, okay. And and can you confirm that just so the folks listening can hear?
Yeah, that that would, that that signage is on the site of the property of the business itself. This would be something where the the signage or the billboard is located. Considerable distance or not on the site of the primary business.
Okay, and do we foresee a need for lighting standards on those digital billboards? Or is that pretty adequately reprehend uh. Represented uh in this in this.
There there's some language with respects to uh 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 lighting, uh in particular of the the flashing of sorts. Of uh of the proposed billboards. I I I do know that in in other communities that uh the the brightness of of signage has has been concerned. And if um a council would like staff to take a further look into that, we can certainly do that as well.
Yeah, um I don't know if that's something that needs to be attacked at this point. I do think. I do think if if we move forward with this, it's certainly something that's worth addressing. I don't know um if I'm the lone to center there. If other folks have concerns about the brightness or anything of that nature. Um if so, we may need to push this off to incorporate those comments. But.
Mister Mayor, the the apple sign, I would argue, is probably the brightest light in the tri-cities. So yeah, it might be something worth considering.
Okay, that's two. Does anyone else want that thrown in and addressed before adopting? Is that a yes? Sounds like four of us are in favor of addressing some, not to give you more homework, but I think if we refine this. Might as well get one cut at the apple rather than adopt it and then say, oh, we don't want those particular. Bright lights once someone's erected. I mean, that's the biggest concern I have, uh having lived in more dense areas than tri-cities. Having seen issues with light pollution. So with that, it sounds like we'll move forward, but we may have another uh revision ahead of our final adoption. So. We're getting there. Um with that, uh no further comments from council. We have uh opportunity for public comments. Any interests?
Hello, Mister Mayor, members of the council, staff. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here to speak tonight. Um on the uh as you know, um I am in support of the uh the billboard changes. Um regarding the brightness, um billboard, digital billboards have light sensors on every one of them. It's required. And they read the ambient light and the and the sun and the moon. Uh at night, they go down to point three percent. Of of what their value is or their output is. And during the day, they ramp up to highest output that they can to keep up with the sun. Um, so, just to let you know on that, um, since I last spoke here, I met with, uh, councilman, council member, I'm sorry, Barajas and Mr. Thomas Branvoa, at Cafe Canarate, um, which is my new favorite coffee shop, I love their coffee there. Wake-up call is good also. Um, but we, we clarified and discussed a few items, the twenty-five max, uh, signs, billboard signs is all that would be allowed, which is e- either eleven or twelve new signs in, in the city of Pasco. Um, the downtown, I think is important, I submitted some language from that discussion I had with, with, uh, councillor Barajas. Um, the core between third and four and fifth avenue and Columbia Street to Shoshone Street, is really the, the place where they were most concerned about, I agree, you can't build a billboard there anyway, really, because of the high close buildings. But I think it's important that there's areas around there that lead into that area that should be allowed. Um, because those downtown small businesses need to get the message out there about events, their businesses, their product. And, uh, that's a great way to do it, especially with digital billboards, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your continued adv- advocacy, uh, sounds like Mr. Gonzalez, there may be a bit of a roadmap on the lighting issue that, um, I mean, obviously, if there's a particular industry standard, maybe we just adopt it outright and go from there, Mr. Hastings.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, council members, staff, uh, Colin Hastings, executive director of the Pasco Chamber of Commerce. Uh, before I make comments on the billboard, I do wanna recognize Jesse, uh, uh, Jesse Rice with, his presentation at the Pasco Chamber last week, knocked it out of the park, good job, thank you, I know that, uh, um, our members really appreciated learning a lot more of what Parks and Rec does. Uh, billboards, uh, John and I connected a few years ago, and, um, I was intrigued by this, concept of course, cause the billboards that are existing, a lot of them are older than me in Pasco and needed an upgrade, and I think that there was some restrictions to this, so that's what kinda got this process started, I think that, the cumulative sort of discussions with all the parties involved have come to a really good resolution, that is acceptable to those that are probably somewhat opposed to billboards, but I think this is a pragmatic sort of approach by having a limit on there, and it will offer, um, businesses, uh, throughout the area, especially downtown, to, to improve their economic status as, as well, in a very tasteful sort of way, uh, as well, I think that those, uh, limitations, have been discussed as well too, as to what can be advertised as well, so I think, uh, um, overall, this is a really good, uh, resolution, looking forward to some of those, uh, billboards getting an upgrade as well as the additional ones, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with that, do we have any additional public comment? Going twice, going three times. With that, now we'll actually move on to item E, which is resolution supplement number four with PBS Engineering, and environmental ink for Court Street and Road sixty-eight intersection improvements, Ms. Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, we are presenting to you an amendment that will allow for additional, um, scope and actually time and, uh, expense, for our consultant PBS Engineering, with our engineer of record for our Road sixty-eight and Court Street intersection improvements. Um, and up until this time, the project is in construction currently, they had been working based on, uh, design scope, where we had some savings and were able to perform the work, next slide please. Uh, and so we are proposing, uh, this amendment to allow to retain this consultant, uh, supporting our team in their, um, in their role of engineer of record and supporting with construction support, so that is answering questions and providing, design intent and so on during construction phase, the project is currently in construction, expected to be completed by the end of the year, and what you're seeing is, uh, the proposed final configuration of that intersection, next slide please. And then just a summary of previous amendments, you see that there's been some supplements that were, uh, at no cost, where we either extending the timeline, or, um, address some of the needs as we had remaining budget within the contract. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Harpster.
Sort of not related to this, but can you remind me when this project is scheduled to be complete?
Yes, it will complete it by the end of the year, the goal is to have all the pavement done before the, uh, paving plans close, so.
This year?
This year.
Thank you, Mr. Milley.
Thank you, Mayor, also kinda unrelated, but, uh, will there be artwork in the center of the roundabout?
There is not artwork planned as part of this contract, but, uh, the roundabout itself will have, uh, rock, in the center and will allow for art to be included afterwards, should we decide to do so.
Hopefully it will, cause I just hate for somebody to fly through there, I mean, there's, I know they're already seeing that this will slow down traffic in this part, um, and it's a safety concern, I'm very glad to see this, cause I've almost got nailed going straight on court and somebody turning out in front of me. But, uh, I do think, in the long run, hopefully we can get some good art, cause I, I think it'd be. Not sure on that one, but, uh, just like to see something eventually, so thank you.
Thank you, do we have any additional public com- or any additional comment from council? Uh, seeing none, um, certainly gonna be nice to drive through a facelifted Pasco by the end of the year, um, with hopefully some traffic mitigations with, with or without our right. Um, do we have any public comment on this issue? Certainly.
Yeah, my name's Jim Foreman, I live on Sylvester Street. And I have no problem with the circle there at Road sixty-eight, I think that's a wonderful thing, only problem is, maybe you ought to drive down from Argent Street to Road sixty-eight, it's almost as good as a dirt road going down there. There's been so many patches and so many holes, it's unbelievable, I really think you ought to go take a look at it. But we're gonna spend multi-millions on a circle down at the end, but like I said, get from Argent and go down to Ro- to Court Street and see what your car looks like.
Thank you for that comment. Certain we'll look at that with our plans. Do we have any additional public comment? Going twice, last call for this item. Seeing none, we'll move on to item F, resolution. Interlocal agreement with this Washington State Department of Natural Resource, Resources for Forest Land Response, uh, Chief Crowley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, the city of Pasco currently has an interlocal agreement with the Department of Natural Resources, or DNR, uh, that allows wildland firefighting services to be provided, um, mutually. Currently, the agreement is written to allow resources to work in each other's dir- jurisdictions, um, but also allows us to have access to DNR's, um, air resources while if needed. Uh, we do have a, an agreement in place right now, but it's, uh, up for, um, renewal, and so, it's something we definitely wanna keep going, and as written right now, this would be renewed until twenty twenty-eight or through twenty twenty-eight. So with that, uh, we will be seeking approval at a next council meeting, but we'd like to open up for any questions or, or comments.
Thank you, Chief, um, any questions or comments from council? Mr. Prowl. Just to, um, is there a cost liability with this agreement? Um, such as perhaps reimbursing DNR if they were, if they mobilize services into our area?
N- no, so for this right here, this would be completely just a reciprocal service, and so we're, um, we take on all the cost for Pasco, and if DNR comes in, then they take all their costs on.
Okay, i- have we ever had any jurisdictional conflicts with them? You know, like, you guys are in, you know, you guys need to cover this area and vice versa?
We don't, and that's why we have this agreement in place, we have found some of those where we had issues going into DNR, and then if it goes into what's called the state mobilization, uh, that could become a billing process, and we do have, um, issues with that unless we have something in writing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Prowl. Uh, seeing no questions or comments from council, do we have any public comment on this issue? Going once, going twice, third time. Thank you, Chief, with that, we'll move on to item G, which is resolution, interlocal agreement with US Fish and Wildlife Service for fire protection. Still with Chief.
All right, uh, good evening again, and same concept as with DNR, but we also have an agreement with, uh, US Fish and Wildlife Service. So again, the, the thought here, um, that we still have in place, but the thought is to have as many different agencies, um, incorporated into our agreements, uh, again, the thought is to get as many resources as possible quickly to these wildland fires, and this is specifically for wildland fires, um, to really rally, uh, different crews and get, um, as many resources as possible, to the incidents and mitigate the problem as soon as, as we can. So this one again, uh, just like DNR, we have it with Fish and Wildlife and something we have in place, but we'd like to continue this as well. And again, uh, ne- next council will be looking at approval, but we'd like to open up for any questions.
Thank you, Chief, do we have any questions or comments from council on this one? Mr. Prowl.
Something similar, um, so I was kinda reading through it, um, from like an operational risk standpoint, does all, do all of our firefighters have the required training in order so they can go fight, you know, uh, fires on these, you know, on the, on these lands?
They do, and so we, how we break that down to wildland training is all of our crews are trained to that level, so we can go to, um, what we call the initial phase, so within the first, um, so many hours, so if we go out and dispatch to initial response, all our crews can do that, if we go on to extended, um, fires or state mobilizations, we do have, uh, additional certifications that, uh, several of our crews have, that they go out to those, but for this right here, what we look at, especially with Fish and Wildlife, is that initial phase, and so we look at the first four hours of an incident, and we all have the same credentials.
Do we ever have issues, you know, if we're finding fires on all these other properties with, you know, our operational, um, you know, capacity to fight fires within our own jurisdiction? Y- you know, like if all, a lot of our firefighters over there finding fires on these lands, are we ever at a deficit for our area? How's that short of?
We're not, so if, if it goes out and, um, we pay attention when we get on the scene, we'll do size up to work with the, uh, Vincent Commander there. If it's gonna be extended period, then we do callbacks, um, and so we, we, um, backfill the city if we feel there's a need for it. And then for this particular agreement with Fish and Wildlife is, um, the first four hours are, each agency covers it, but after four hours, then we do have the ability to, um, bill. So if we go into Fish and Wildlife territory, we can bill for staff and, and for resources used.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any additional question or comment from council? Seeing none, do we have any questions or comments from the public? Going once, going twice, third time. Hearing none, we'll move on to item H, resolution, Tri-City's Use Soccer Association Mutual Release and Settlement Agreement from Director Rice.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, and, and Chief Crowley, thank you, you gave me like at least ten more minutes based on how fast you were, so, down. Um, this evening, uh, let me get my notes now.
I was just gonna say, I assure you, five is five.
Um, so this evening I have a resolution before you regarding the Tri-City's Use Soccer Complex, which is located on Bullenbor- Burton Boulevard near the softball complex, uh, regarding early mutual release and settlement agreement with Tri-City Use Soccer Association. Uh, the mutual settlement would end the current ten-year complex agreement extension signed in August twenty twenty-one with Tri-City Use Soccer Association, and transition the management operation of the complex to the city's, uh, Pasco Parks and Recreation Department, which will allow for centralized scheduling and use of the field similar to other city sports complexes. Um, in addition to transitioning to management operation, the agreement also includes the transfer of Tri-City Soccer Association purchased equipment, required to continue the operation of the facility, uh, to the city for rental credit, which the Tri-City Soccer Association will use for future field and turn it rentals at the facility. Uh, the equipment includes things like the, the paint striper, field paint, benches, goals, nets and concession type equipment. Uh, presentation has some additional, uh, details, um, which includes, uh, Tri-City Soccer would receive priority scheduling for the twenty-four, twenty-five soccer season, which they've already reserved. Um, they requested to use their current office space as their place of business, um, potentially through June twenty twenty-six. Um, and again, it transfers all the management operations scheduling, uh, to City Pasco Parks and Recreation Department. Um, some current actions, we've agreed upon the equipment transfer list and value, um, we came to an agreement for an earlier transition date to accommodate another organization's tournament, which is actually taking place, uh, this week, this upcoming weekend, uh, so that was great. Uh, Tri-City Soccer is removing excess equipment from the complex, um, as noted, they've already made their field reservations, um, agreed to rental rate and term for their business use of the office, and have al- also met with city staff to understand scheduling demands and field layout needs, from other organizations to help us successfully transition the management. Uh, so with that, this evening, I'm asking you to, uh, consider approval of a resolution, uh, approving the mutual release and settlement agreement. And with that, any questions?
Thank you, kept it under five.
I'd like to be quick.
I see no questions or, Mr. Prowl.
Just, just one, um, it was, it's in regards to the property transfer, and, uh, it says that, you know, it's valued about one hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, are we sure that that valuation is correct and that the equipment is in good working order?
Uh, yes, both, uh, several staff members met with their staff, went through the equipment, compared it to what it costs to purchase new, and, ultimately, we concluded about a sixty percent value based on new of what we'd, what we'd potentially purchase for, so we feel that based on the equipment's condition, and, uh, versus buying new, that we do feel we came to a mutual agreement on that.
Okay, and just wanna make sure, we're, we're not gonna entertain any more of these types of agreements for, I guess in this case, for the soccer fields.
Uh, that's been the goal, I think this agreement was something we'd done when we were a much smaller city, where we didn't potentially have the staff to manage it, manage that operation or rental, so as we move forward, I'm hoping to have all city-owned sporting complexes and parks managed by the Parks and Rec Department, to ensure equal access for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Seeing none, do we have any questions or comments from the public? Going once, twice, third time. With that, thank you, Director Rice, we'll move on to item number six, which is miscellaneous council discussion. I see no lights, I missed, no, mi- Mr. Grim, you got me.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was just hoping, um, to get an update from Director Sarah on Sylvester Street, I'm kinda sad, Mr. Foreman, who lives right along Sylvester Street, which probably brought him to our council chambers tonight, but, I, you know, see lots of activity down at this end, the striping and the, the center lane and all that, but I'm sure the residents on the other side feel like, um, there's kinda been a pause at that end, so just hoping for an update, thank you.
Absolutely, so there is a lot of work happening throughout the corridor. Uh, if we start on the eastern end of the corridor, you're seeing some striping that is occurring right now. The contractor throughout this week will be working between Tenth Avenue and Twentieth Avenue with every striping. And then at the intersection of, uh, sixteen, uh, sorry, Fourteenth and Sylvester, there's work happening, uh, associated with, um, catch basin, so stormwater infrastructure and setting curb returns, so that, uh, in the coming weeks, we can have sidewalks and curb ramps installed and finishing the work in that intersection. Now, on the western end of the corridor, um, we have, uh, work occurring related to ramps. So it's, um, truncated dome, so those yellow pads that we typically see in ADA ramps, are being installed in all the crossings where the pathway will intersect, um, other side roads, not Sylvester. And, um, with that, there is preparation for paving to occur next week. So, and that is on the pave, on the pathway, the multi-use pathway will, is expected to commence the paving process next week. So it's a lot of work, there's lots of crews working all at the same time. Uh, last week, we were expecting to get along, uh, further with our striping, but rain, uh, tamper our plans a little bit. Uh, but we are trying to recoup the time lost in the last week.
Perfect, thank you, so, and then just for clarification too, so the middle of the road, that is gonna get scraped and repaved, correct?
Uh, no, there will not be an overlay, uh, on Sylvester, it will all be existing pavement, what we've done is, uh, patch and repair, anything that was needed as base, uh, from the setting of the, of the curves, as well as installation of any underground infrastructure, and there was quite a bit of it.
So just one last question, when do you, um, foresee the completion at least, especially there on the west end, where I know a lot of those residents have been impacted so much?
So we are hoping for com- completion this fall, so we're shooting for an October date. Uh, hopefully we get there sooner than that, but, uh, weather needs to cooperate.
Okay, perfect, thanks for the update, appreciate it.
Thank you, I'm Mr. Prowl.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be brief, um, you know, I, I, when it comes to a lot of the issues, I don't think any issues really closed. Um, so with that being said, I, I would like to gauge this body's interest, um, to perhaps bring back, um, the discussion to reallocate, those last ARPA funds for MLK Center, um, I've been contacted by many people in the community, and after. Um, I've been contacted by many people in the community and after reviewing a lot of information from staff. Um, you know, that MLK Center was given or, it was earmarked with millions of dollars at one point. And over the years, just dwindled and dwindled to, to now right currently where it's zero. And so I do feel like it's putting this project back. Um, sending it back and really, we don't know when this is gonna get done. So I would, I would just like to have that discussion again and see if we can reallocate that money.
Thank you. Just, just wanted to provide a point of clarification. I think there's still a couple million from ARPA that are allocated to that project. Not that that changes the conversation, but I just wanted to clarify that.
See, I think that, that's the issue. It's like, it's so confusing about what's not allocated and what allocated, cause he, I know, same address as I now, but based on what I was seeing, it looked like any money was allocated. Towards MLK, any ARPA funds.
Yeah, I think there's a total of six and a half million. There's uh, both federal earmark, there's a state allocation from capital budget and then ARPA as well.
Jeez, I, I guess I'll have to go through the email again. The email just doesn't really say that. And so I think that's what's kind of confusing sometimes when we look at that stuff. Um, cause if that's the case, then I guess, then why are we discussing about the one point two-six about reallocating that? So I, I, I guess I gotta get the story straight now at this point, so I guess I'll just rescind my ask, because yeah, that's quite.
Council member, we can still bring back a presentation for the current update of, of where it all is, so that it's, it's plain as day, I guess, for, for, for everyone, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page. We can start with an email and if, if, if that's not enough, then please let us know and we'll, we'll bring it back in a more formal way.
Well, I don't know, I'd rather just kind of hash it out in the public eye. Um, I mean, the, the article from the paper really wasn't a good look for the city. Um, but now I'm here and there actually is six million of ARPA funds, I guess. I'm trying to understand.
Sorry, not six million of ARPA funds, uh, six and a half million total. I think there's two or two and a half.
Okay, so maybe you guys are just not hearing what I was saying. So there is money allocated toward the project, but I'm talking about the ARPA funds. So we took away one point six, one point two-six million of ARPA funds. So that's what I'm talking about. I would like to discuss that again. If this body is interested.
Mr. Grim, is your light on?
Yeah, no, no, thank, yes, sir. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just gonna say that, you know, I, I think we do look at, um, you know, I would love to see. I'm looking forward to my budget meeting this week with the city to see exactly what we have in the coffers and what we can do. But yes, you know, my look at the, the building, obviously I'm not an architect or an engineer, but yes, it needs a lot more work than the, the six and a half million. You know, that based on some of the mold issues and the, the base of the concrete there and everything, you know, it does look like it needs a lot of work. And you know, whether it's a, I don't think the million and a half is gonna make a, you know, difference at that point. I mean, it's gonna probably need twelve million total. But yeah, just my clarificate, or my understanding the whole time was that, yeah, there was still six and a half million kind of earmarked towards that project. So those are my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Do you have a position on his request?
Um, I, I would just, I, I mean, I don't think a million and a half is gonna make, I think that's more.
I, I don't, I don't think we need a decision on where to go. Do you have the interest of having an open conversation or preference towards email?
Oh, as far as that goes, I have no preference whatsoever. Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Prowe.
I just wanna say that I would prefer to have this in person. It seems that there's a lot of misinformation um, or confusion about the information shared by staff. Um, it's not an empty coffer that is pending helping uh, uh, rehabilitate the MLK building. Um, so I think it is imperative that we have a full discussion in public, uh, so that everything is out in the air. And any potential questions, any potential um, misunderstandings are, are brought up in, in this open forum. Um, that way we could disperse any further questions uh, in regard to the MLK and the funding and um, and how the city looks. It's, it's not that the city's ignoring this facility. Um, again, it's just misinformation and I would prefer that we do this in an open forum. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, all dissent here. I think uh, communications from staff to council would suffice for me. Um, and certainly if an actual statement, either from myself or from City Manager Lincoln, would be helpful to, you know, kind of calm the flames, if you will. Then, then we go there and then if that's not adequate, then we have a public meeting. But I mean, we've discussed this, we've taken, I think, action on this item. Three to four times over the past year, year and a half. Um, I think having another meeting about this, even if it's quote for information. I think it just continually, uh, I don't think it solves the problem. I think it just, it's gonna open up to further questions and why this, why that. At some point, we gotta make a decision on the budget. It's what we did. We rescinded it. And then we've, now we're in a different position. So my preference is information in the council and then if, if a statement's warranted, we make it.
Ms. Milley. Yeah, I'm uh, agreeing with you. I know that uh, when I did my vote, I voted the way I felt was right, so I'm not against that. But uh, sent us an email and uh, yeah, if we could uh, put something out there, that's, but I don't wanna rehash things, cause we're always gonna rehash every vote if it gets out of this, so. Um, yeah, and I have no qualms about how I voted, so I would like to, yeah, basically what the mayor was saying.
Mr. Webster.
Yeah, I agree with Mayor Proton Milley's sentiment probably the most. You vote a certain way and you live with the consequences regardless of what those are. Um, and I'm just saying to the whole body, the uh, you know, a good example, the, I've been uh, very open about removing the trees at Peanuts Park North. And a resident came and expressed her uh, disappreciation for that. And um, we're not gonna go replant those trees. We made a decision. We're living with the consequences. Side note on that, I drove my brother to Peanuts Park North this weekend, thinking I would have a show to give him, and I didn't, because it's cleaned up and looking nice. So kudos to uh, Parks American uh, police.
Okay. Um, are we in the position where we're wa- where we're weighted three-three? Do, did the two of you want a public meeting on this or no?
What I mentioned, the public forum is again to disperse any further question of the process that we're doing. Uh, but if you wanted to just send out a communication, that's perfectly fine with me, followed by a statement, again, just to make sure everyone is informed.
Okay. You have a position misplaced though, or?
I mean, I don't care either way. I've met with people from the community regarding this. I think a lot of them have a better understanding now than, than night that they came here. Um, so I don't see, I guess email would be fine with me.
Is that clear, Mr. Lincoln? All right. So it sounds like the general consensus of the body is to move forward with an email. If we need to bring it open to the public, we'll do so later in the day.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Um, I see no further lights. Mr. Lincoln, do you, wow, it's a quick head shake. Um, with that, we have, uh, moving on to item number seven, executive session, no needed. That moves us on to item number eight, which is adjourned. It is eight fifty-six PM. We are now adjourned.